This evening, which is awfully exciting to have our National Merit semifinalists joining us. So, without further ado, we'll do jump to roll call.
All Board members are present.
Wonderful. Next, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please rise, Dr. Wall is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Courtney going to be taking a picture?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will just ask them all. Yep. Next, we're going to move to our special presentations. Before we get started with special presentations, Courtney is going to be taking a picture of all of our recipients this evening. So, as soon as we're finished with the special presentation, if you could stay, convene, Courtney will get that picture, and then you are welcome to join us for the rest of the evening, or you can leave and go study and hang out at home with your families. So, with that, we will move on to our special, special presentation. Mr. John Williams and Dr. Wall are going to be leading us.
Good evening, and it is a very special evening. We're very proud to be here. To introduce to you this year's National Merit semifinalists, every fall, we have this opportunity to come in, and it's a time of great pride for our school and our school district because many of these folks are not just products of our high school, but products of our school corporation K through 12. It's also a great family honor, as you can see, lots of mom and dads, and probably maybe even a grandma or grandpa in here, because this is truly an individual honor that these students have achieved. To put it in perspective, and the kids have heard this, and their parents have heard this, and you guys have heard it, but it's been a year, is in the United States, the National Merit, 1.5 million students take the PSAT as a junior. And out of that PSAT score, National Merit semifinalists are determined. Out of that 1.5 million, which represents 22,000 high schools, National Merit, they separate 50,000 of that 1.5 million, far consideration. And then they further separate 16,000. So, our students here today represent 16,000 out of 1.5 million, which is in the very top 1 percent. It's an amazing accomplishment that they should be very proud of. The other thing that this is a beginning of is the National Merit Scholarship Program. And one of the things I think is really neat is that this round, while they're here tonight, is based solely upon their PSAT score they took as a junior. The next round, to become a finalist, is a little more involved, and the students know this. They'll have an opportunity to write an essay about their goals, what they want to achieve. College Board will look at their transcripts, see not just what kind of test taker they are, but what kind of student they've been, and their counselor will write a recommendation about them. And then those things will be considered to move students to the National Merit finalist stage. And one of the things we're very proud of at Carmel is that yearly end, we have a high success rate of kids matriculating to that next level. So, we're very proud of these students. As I said, it's an individual honor that they should be proud of, but it's one that we're also proud of them as a school corporation. And I think that it's important, before we say their names, just acknowledge that, obviously, they're all very smart, but they also work very hard. And I think this achievement represents not just their ability, but their willingness to step up, take tough courses, challenge themselves, spend time working on their courses, as opposed to other things. And so, I applaud them, not just for their ability, we're thankful for that, but applaud them for their willingness to put through the effort. And also sprinkled among this group are many of the leaders of our school, kids who are not just involved in the classroom, but they go outside the classroom. They're involved in our co- and extracurricular activities. They're involved in other leadership positions, not just in our school, but in our community, in their community also. So, really well-rounded, top-notch people, which we are very proud to introduce to you tonight. And I know as a board, you're very proud of them also. So, with this, I'll let Melinda Stephan, who you met earlier, Melinda's the College and Career Coordinator, she's going to come up and read their names. I just want on the record that I have read their names, and I thought I did a really good job.
[laughing]
But I'm not going to push it, so I'm going to let Melinda take over this thing.
I vouched for that, and he did.
Dr. Wall and school board members, I am both pleased and honored to introduce and congratulate our 2017 National Merit semifinalists. When I call your names, students, if you will come forward and accept your certificate, and then I know our board members would like to congratulate you as well. And do you want them to sit down?
Stay up there.
Or stay standing? Okay, all right. So, we'll start with Rachel Anderson. Taylor Bickett. Rebecca Burns. Charles Burton. Darren Chang. Larry Chen. Stone Chen. Elliot Choi. Morgan Culpepper. Clayton Dedkey. Asim Dengara. Nathan Fay. Brandon Fisher. Adam Foster. Zachary Gartenhaus. Cecilia German. Alexander Hemenow. Adam Gostemalski. Jacob Green. Parat Gamala. Dave Guo. Vivian Guo. Caleb He. Kathy Wong. Anthony G. Ray Jung. John Latona. You're good, you're good. Cindy Lee. Catherine Long. Ayan Mitra. Rohit Nagaraj. Anuj Patel. Emily Paul. Gillian Paxton. Selena Chen. Emma Ratsman. Ione Robinson. Andrew Seketa. Evelyn Shi. Ramit Singh. Noah Springer. Christian Staley. Jackson Switzer. Alan Thompson. Bruce Ting. Michael Wong. Yun Ping Wang. Catherine Wolfert. Brendan Yap. Melissa Yap. Michael Zhang. And Jenny Zhao. These are your 2017 National Merit semifinalists. [applause] All right, I'm going to have everyone cover the front here. Organize yourself where you can see. Hey, guys. Oh, yeah, you know, I have all these emails I need to get on Friday, so I got everything that we're the one that's going to be out of town. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Stay there for the parents. Parents, go ahead. Right, make sure you can see. All right. Parents, are you ready to go? Hang on, hang on. One. Got it? Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, that was a good one.
Once again, congratulations to all the students and their parents. And as a board, we wish you all the very best as you finish your completion packages for your, what is the process called?
National Merit.
Just National Merit?
Yeah.
Well, for the National Merit. With that, we will move straight into consent, seeing that there isn't anybody wishing to speak in public participation. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just have one question. We've had in the past some issues with not being able to recruit enough bus drivers, and I'm wondering if we could just get an update as to where we stand?
Yeah, as we said last year, when the economy is strong, that is a challenging area, and we've been working on that. We'd be happy to give you an update next month. Something we're definitely, what's the word we're using, Kareen?
Blitz.
Well, we're doing media blitz to actively recruit, Michael. But yeah, it is a definite economic indicator. When the economy's strong, it's tough to get drivers. But we are, the transportation and HR are working very diligently to fill those posts, but we'll keep you updated on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All in favor of approving consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing. So, at this time, I will suspend the regular board meeting and open a public hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed additional appropriations for the 2016 general fund and referendum fund. Back in September, actually September 26, Mr. McMichael presented the proposed additional appropriation for the 2016 general fund and referendum fund, and he asked the board to authorize the administration to advertise for a public hearing. We have done so, and tonight is that public hearing. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments about the plans?
Just that this, there's additional appropriation to the general fund for $1,250,000, and for the referendum fund, $1,350,000. Since these budgets were put together for the 2016 budget, we had two significant additional expenses. One was for retroactive pay for teachers, which we made in February, and also the performance grant that's provided from the state came in late, and so that payment was made the first of the year. And then we will make another one, if it comes in on time in November, we'll make another payment, which is over $1 million, in December. And so, this additional appropriation is supported by appropriate revenue, has no impact on taxes. It's just a matter of getting the authority to spend the money that we've received.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. So, at this time, I'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. And if there aren't going to be any comments, we will quickly move ahead and close the hearing. Well, it does not appear as though anybody's wishing to approach the podium, so at this point in time, we will close the hearing. Next, on our agenda, we have action items. First of those is the 2017-18 course recommendations.
Great, thank you. This evening, I bring to you proposed course changes for the 2017-18 course of study at our high school. I brought these back in September for discussion, and I'm bringing them now, recommending that you approve them.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I get a motion on the table to approve the course changes?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Perfect. Discussion?
Thank you. All in favor of supporting the course recommendations presented by Dr. Dudley signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have our Sports Medicine II waiver. Dr. Dudley?
Great, thank you. This evening, I also bring to you a waiver for one of our courses, Sports Medicine II, to have a waiver for the state to recognize that as an advanced health credit. Currently, the state does not recognize that as an advanced health credit.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the, to allow the, oh, to approve the recommendation to allow Sports Medicine II waiver filing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
How long do you suppose this process will take for this waiver to be approved?
It would be approved for next year.
For not till next year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then, all those in favor of supporting the Sports Medicine II waiver signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we actually have the adoption of the resolution for the appropriations. Mr. McMichael?
Yes. In addition to having the public hearing, it's necessary for the board to approve this resolution so that we would then submit this to the state, which their approval is also required.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table to approve the adoption resolution for the additional appropriations to the 2016 general fund and referendum fund?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next, we turn to Mr. McMichael as well for the adoption of the 2017 budget plans.
Yes, thank you. Previous meetings, the budget and the three-year capital projects fund plan and the 12-year bus replacement plan were presented to the board, and then later, notice was advertised for a public hearing, and it was opportunity given for the public to comment. So, at this time, I would ask for board approval for the budget and the two plans, and then we will also submit those to the state for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to adopt the 2017 budgets, the capital projects fund plan, and the 12-year bus replacement plan?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next, we have a series of change orders, the first of being Carmel High School, the 2016 finishes and renovations. And we'll turn to Mr. McMichael again.
Thank you. This is, these change orders involve a total of six contractors, and the total amount of the change order is $20,102, and this is an add change order.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School 2016 finishes and renovations?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have our Sports Medicine II waiver. Dr. Dudley?
Great, thank you. This evening, I also bring to you a waiver for one of our courses, Sports Medicine II, to have a waiver for the state to recognize that as an advanced health credit. Currently, the state does not recognize that as an advanced health credit.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the, to allow the, oh, to approve the recommendation to allow Sports Medicine II waiver filing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
How long do you suppose this process will take for this waiver to be approved?
It would be approved for next year.
For not till next year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then, all those in favor of supporting the Sports Medicine II waiver signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we actually have the adoption of the resolution for the appropriations. Mr. McMichael?
Yes. In addition to having the public hearing, it's necessary for the board to approve this resolution so that we would then submit this to the state, which their approval is also required.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table to approve the adoption resolution for the additional appropriations to the 2016 general fund and referendum fund?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next, we turn to Mr. McMichael as well for the adoption of the 2017 budget plans.
Yes, thank you. Previous meetings, the budget and the three-year capital projects fund plan and the 12-year bus replacement plan were presented to the board, and then later, notice was advertised for a public hearing, and it was opportunity given for the public to comment. So, at this time, I would ask for board approval for the budget and the two plans, and then we will also submit those to the state for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to adopt the 2017 budgets, the capital projects fund plan, and the 12-year bus replacement plan?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next, we have a series of change orders, the first of being Carmel High School, the 2016 finishes and renovations. And we'll turn to Mr. McMichael again.
Thank you. This is, these change orders involve a total of six contractors, and the total amount of the change order is $20,102, and this is an add change order.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School 2016 finishes and renovations?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second change order is for the sports building at Murray Stadium. This is a total add change order of $1,242.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the new sports building, Murray Stadium, change orders?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The next change order is for interior finishes remodeling at Town Meadow Elementary School, and this is a deduct change order in the amount of $8,588.
May I get a motion on the table to improve the interior finishes remodeling at Town Meadow deductions?
So move.
Should've given you that one first.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And the last change order is for the project that we did at the nadatorium, and this is an add change order in the amount of $3,664.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table to approve the exterior and mechanical upgrades to the nadatorium at the Carmel High School?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. And Mr. McMichael, we're keeping you very busy. You are next for our financial, monthly financial update, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the update here is through the month of September, so we're 75 percent through the year. I will note for you that this report indicates that we have 24 percent of the budget remaining. That would seem to be about right, but the earlier comments about the additional appropriation, we will need that additional appropriation because of the, primarily because of the additional payments that will be paid in December, and also for the balance of, salaries for the balance of this year.
Mr. McMichael, are you going to open up the floor for questions, or do you have other comments you'd like to make about?
No other comments about the financial report. I would respond to any questions that you might have.
Tricia?
I do have a couple of questions, actually. Just to really make sure I understand the report and possibly next steps, I guess. So, if we looked at, right underneath receipts, and it says, the row that says property tax, is that basically our referendum, our operational referendum we have right now?
Yes, that's totally the referendum, as well as the two items below that, the financial institutions tax and the excise tax. All of that's related to our local referendum.
Okay, thank you. So, if I read this correctly, then, Indiana, current Indiana law says we're allowed to pass an operational referendum for up to seven years.
That's correct.
And this represents, I don't know, about 13 percent of our budget. So, would, if the board would do nothing and not ask for another referendum or something like that, would we not have this 13 percent starting January 1, 2018?
That's correct. We would not. And it's actually about 14 percent of our operating revenue. The budget includes some revenues, such as student fees, the performance grant for awards to teachers. It's kind of money in and money out. So, if we were to not have this referendum and would lose this, we would actually lose about 14 percent of our revenue that would be available beyond that in and out revenue. And that would be just completely devastating, in my opinion, to the school district. Kind of put that in perspective, the amount of referendum that we're receiving is enough funds to fund about 2,300 students. So, if you think in terms of four of our elementary schools- Then, all those in favor of supporting the Sports Medicine II waiver signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we actually have the adoption of the resolution for the appropriations. Mr. McMichael?
Yes, in addition to having the public hearing, it's necessary for the board to approve this resolution so that we would then submit this to the state, which their approval is also required.
Thank you. Make it a motion on the table to approve the adoption resolution for the additional appropriations to the 2016 General Fund and Referendum Fund.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. And next, we turn to Mr. McMichael as well for the adoption of the 2017 budget plans.
Yes, thank you. Previous meetings, the budget and the three-year capital projects fund plan and the 12-year bus replacement plan were presented to the board, and then later, notice was advertised for a public hearing, and it was opportunity given for the public to comment. So at this time, I would ask for board approval for the budget and, and the two plans, and then we will also submit those to the state for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Make it a motion on the table to adopt the 2017 budgets, the capital projects fund plan, and the 12-year bus replacement plan.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next, we have a series of change orders, the first of being Carmel High School, the 2016 finishes and renovations. And we'll turn to Mr. McMichael again.
Thank you. This is, these change orders involve a total of six contractors, and the total amount of the change order is $20,102, and this is an addition, add change order.
Make it a motion on the table to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School 2016 finishes and renovations.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
The second change order is for the sports building at Murray Stadium. This is a total add change order of $1,242.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Make it a motion on the table to approve the new sports building Murray Stadium change orders.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The next change order is for interior finishes remodeling at Town Meadow Elementary School, and this is a deduct change order in the amount of $8,588.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the interior finishes remodeling at Town Meadow deductions?
So move. Second to deduction.
Should've given you that one first.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And the last change order is for the project that we did at the Naddatorium, and this is an add change order in the amount of $3,664.
Thank you. Make it a motion on the table to approve the exterior and mechanical upgrades to the Naddatorium at the Carmel High School.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. And Mr. McMichael, we're keeping you very busy. You are next for our financial, monthly financial update, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the update here is for, through the month of September, so we're 75% through the year. I will note for you that this report indicates that we, we have 24% of the budget remaining. That would seem to be about right, but the earlier comments about the additional appropriation, we will need that additional appropriation because of the, primarily because of the additional payments that will be paid in December, and also for the balance of salaries for the balance of this year.
Mr. McMichael, are you going to open up the floor for questions, or do you have other comments you'd like to make about?
No other comments about the financial report. I would respond to any questions that you might have.
Tricia?
I do have a couple of questions, actually. Just to really make sure I understand the report and, and possibly next steps, I guess. So if we looked at, right underneath receipts, and it says, the row that says property tax, is that basically our referendum, our operational referendum we have right now?
Yes, that's totally the referendum, as well as the, the two items below that, the financial institutions tax and the excise tax. All of that's related to our local referendum.
Okay, thank you. So if I read this correctly, then Indiana current, current Indiana law says we're allowed to pass an operational referendum for up to seven years.
That's correct.
And this represents, I don't know, about 13% of our budget, so would, if the board would do nothing and not ask for another referendum or something like that, would it, would we not have this 13% starting January 1st, 2018?
That's correct, we would not. It's actually about 14% of our operating revenue. The budget includes some revenues such as student fees, the performance grant for awards to teachers, that's kind of money in and money out. So if we were to not have this referendum and would lose this rev, this, we would actually lose about 14% of our revenue that would be available beyond that in and out revenue. And that would be just completely devastating, in my opinion, to the school district. Kind of put that in perspective, the amount of referendum that we're receiving is enough funds to fund about 2,300 students. So if you think in terms of four of our elementary schools, their entire operating funds essentially would be gone if we did not have this referendum. That's how significant the local referendum is to supplement what we receive from the state.
Okay, so literally, the long session, which is the budget session, starts at the very beginning of January. If we would, oh, let's say, look at the referendum question again on, on a schedule, on a typical schedule, the board would really have to look at the initial opening weeks of the long session to see if there's some, you know, huge effort, huge move by legislators to hugely increase K through 12 funding. And absent that, it sounds like it would be, your professional opinion, that it would be the most fiscally responsible decision on the board to seek a way, which would be another referendum, to get that 14% to continue in our budget. Is that true?
Yes, it would absolutely be, I think, the only responsible choice. It's worth pointing out that this referendum is not for bricks and mortar. This is absolutely 100% used to, to provide the quality education in our classrooms. It's entirely what it's used for is, for salaries and benefits.
And it looks like with the referendum funds and the other revenue here, that does, for the most part, cover our expenses. Absent that 14%, we'd be in big trouble.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying all of that. I, I thought all that was rolled in there, but, especially when you put in the terms of 2,300 students and, you know, the nitty gritty of it all, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Pam?
Yes, another comment I'd like to make. If you look at our year-to-date, our, the state basic grant, and then you look at the full year, what we're expecting for the full year, and then you look at our total receipts, that would include the referendum money.
Correct.
And then if you look at our total expenditures, which equals our total budget, we would be hurting very badly if we did not meet the 109 million out, because the state grant is only 89 million, so that is not sufficient to maintain what we in the Carmel District hold dear, and that is our services to our children.
That's correct. Another way to look at it is about one more month and we would be out of money. So we literally, without that, without that local support, at, at our pattern of expenditures, we would, we would totally run out of money but for November and December. It's, it's almost two months' worth of operating funds.
Are there other comments or questions? I think what the two of you brought up are really important, important components of this. Roger, one other thing, I know we have as a district, really have practiced a number of cost-saving measures to be responsible with what we have. I know you have this information someplace. Could you bring this to the next meeting? Could you prepare?
Yes.
Okay.
I absolutely do that.
That would be great. I think that would be very helpful to the board. And I know we've gone to our four-day work weeks during the summer and some of the different environmental, positive environmental aspects of turning off the lights and the temperatures and what have you, but I know we have done as a district a number of different things. It'd be great to see that consolidated.
We can do that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Wong?
Thank you. I just want to make the board aware that this week is Red Ribbon Week in our schools, and it's about responsible decision-making and clearly promoting choosing positive alternatives with free time as opposed to negative alternatives with free times for our student population as it is related to any substance abuse, alcohol, alcohol, tobacco, or drugs. I really want to commend the, all 15 schools for their efforts, not only what they're doing as far as generating school spirit, but really encouraging our student population to engage in these positive endeavors, and also promote self-awareness and availability of opportunities to discuss any challenges they may face in a preventative mode. So we really want to champion Red Ribbon Week this week at all of our Carmel Clay schools.
Well, thank you. Moving right along, we've got a board member report, and to that, we'll turn to Tricia for the legislative report.
Okey-dokey. I do have a rather short update, but important. Leila and Kathy and I were able to attend the ISBA Fall Regional Meeting, October 13, and Mike, are you able, are you attending one later this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay, so that'll be great. When we went, the leadership provided an explanation of this year's ISBA foundational statements and the ISBA legislative priorities, which we talked about publicly in our meetings earlier while we were trying to develop, or as part of the process to develop our own district legislative priorities. But they also brought up some warnings, I think, to be on the lookout for, one area was, I look for charter school funding increases at the federal level. Another thing they brought up was an expansion of the state voucher program with really not any clear evidence to date on its effectiveness. Still kind of looking for that information. And then third, predicted, predicted legislative proposal to institute educational savings accounts as a ways, as a means to funding public and private education, and I believe Superintendent Wong brought that up at one of his superintendent reports either last meeting or the meeting before that. So that is of huge concern, and we have our eye on that. Our Carmel Clay Schools 2017 legislative priorities are set and have been emailed out to legislators and key leaders. To date, we have meetings already set with Senator Kenley and Representatives Tor and Shibley, and those will take place in the next two weeks. In addition, Senator Kenley has submitted specific questions that he would like us to answer, which I took as a very positive sign that he sees these meetings as a, as a two-way conversation to really, and values our opinion on different things. So I thought that was very nice. Nick and I are excited about that, and Nick is prepping some, make sure we have some responses that are all in tune with what people have said in the past here. In addition to that, I'm meeting with Julia Kazicki, who is a member of the Noblesville School Board and also the ISBA Region Five Director, and our conversation will concentrate more on the process of adopting district-level legislative priorities, since she would have it from her own board member perspective, and also from different boards she would hear from her regional position with ISBA. So I think that'll be interesting, and obviously I'll report on that, too. And then quickly, in the news, three different areas, I think. Since it's election season, mostly we're hearing campaign promises and platforms, and so I just really want to put out there to please remember to vote November 8. Second, there was, as you know, we've talked about this before, a 23-member panel tasked with recommending an alternative to the I-Step, and it looks like they will not be able to reach a one recommendation, and it's now very likely that a one-year extension will be granted before any I-Step replacement will be used. Along this lines, very disconcerting was a presentation I attended at the ISBA IAPSS Fall Conference, and it had panel members from this 23-member panel, and they signed up to present, and their thought was, so that they can give an update, and that's why we were all there to hear. But really what they talked about was a frustrating process to them, that, that there really wasn't a good flow of, this is in their opinion, but they're there at every meeting, that there really wasn't a good flow of conversation of testing options, that some testing options were not allowed to be discussed because they weren't allowed to be put on the agenda, and other options were allowed to be put on the agenda so they could be discussed. So it was kind of a hand-tying process from the start, and so I think that would be important for us to keep our eye on how that process continues and the integrity involved in that process. And then finally, the Indiana Coalition for Public Education's 2016 Report Card was published, and this system rates legislative incumbents who filed for reelection in 2016, and it grades them on their votes on five key education bills. According to their system, I feel I must report to you, that all of our area legislators have been given the grade of F. So I put that out there, that's one way, it's of grading, that's five education bills that they're looking at, and that's where we stand with that issue. There's other education-related bills, there's other ways to look at it, but in this way, and for our board members, it was in our journal that we got, and it looks like this. So, and that, on that sour note, that concludes my report.
Tricia, I have a quick question. You had said that agenda, that some of the participants were not able to present some of the material because they were not allowed to be put on that agenda. Who created the agenda? Who does that?
Well, the person who is in charge of the, who was put in as chair of this committee was appointed by, I believe, Governor Pence, and these committee members reported that an attorney sat next to her at every meeting, and they consulted each other constantly. So how things get on the agenda exactly or not, I don't know, that's just the information that was shared.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments about the legislative message? Any other board members who have any information they'd like to share? Just one quick bit of information, I sent an email earlier. I know at our last board meeting, Pam and I, from part of the policy committee, had said that we were going to be looking at defining our board districts based on the 2010 census. We have since had some additional information that I, that, we'll put that on hold, so there was an email sent out with some of that information, and we're hoping to take a look at that in November. Yes.
Did you send that out really recently, as in we might not have seen it?
Yes, as of today, later this afternoon, today. Yes. Any other comments? And Kathy, you would not have seen it because you're locked out. Any other comments or questions? Well, with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you.